Alice. That's it right now. That I see. So we still don't have a quorum, so we're gonna have to wait for a couple more people.
Hey Gabriel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the tutor is here next to me also.
Okay, great. So Vice Chair Navarrete, I think Chair Vitan said she was gonna be participating tonight, so. If you wanna, we might wait another minute or so.
Yeah, I think she might be the County of Riverside that's raising her hand.
Oh, okay.
I'm not 100% sure, though.
Chair Vitan, are you on the, on the participating yet? I don't see County of Riverside.
I think they moved exit and is gonna rejoin right now.
Apologies, I was signed in with, with my other Zoom.
No problem.
Okay, are we waiting for anyone?
I think the only one that isn't on the meeting right now is Commissioner Lial.
Okay.
And Commissioner Figueroa.
Okay. So we don't have a quorum yet then, right?
We, we, yeah, we do have a quorum because we have you. We have Vice Chair Navarrete, we have Commissioner Gonzalez, and then we have new alternate Commissioner Gutierrez.
Okay. Okay. And is everyone from staff present? Or everyone who needs to be? Okay. Okay, so well, we have a quorum, so. I don't know if we wanna wait a couple of minutes or. We can get started. Okay, so I guess we'll wait, or we'll see if the other commissioners join, but we'll get started. So calling this meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And. Commission, Commissioner Navarrete, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yep. Alright, so right hand over your art. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and can we please get roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa. Currently absent. Commissioner Lial. Currently absent. Vice Chair Navarrete.
Here.
New alternate Commissioner Gutierrez.
There.
And Chair Vitan.
Here, and I'd like to point out that Commissioner Figueroa just joined.
Okay, we'll note him as president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And. Just making sure we don't have anyone else on the attendees. Okay, okay, perfect. Hmm. Okay, so we're moving on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continued to another date. Or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have anyone moving any items or requesting for them to be continued? No. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve this agenda?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Gonzalez's motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, and can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Commissioner Lial is still absent, right?
Yeah, I don't see him on here.
Okay, then alternate Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes, I.
And Chair Vitan.
I, thank you.
Motion passes.
Gabe, I didn't hear my name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss you? Okay, Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. We're moving on to approval of the minutes. And these are the Draft Planning Commission meeting minutes for February 16, 2022. If everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes, do we have any changes for these before we approve them? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve meeting minutes for February 16, 2022?
Motion to approve them as presented.
Thank you. And can we get a second?
Oh, second, motion to figures.
Thank you. And can we get, this is a question for. For council. Instead of doing roll call, are we able to say all those in favor, I, and any opposed?
No, so technically we have to do roll call.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure I wasn't taking too long. Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
And Commissioner Lial is still absent. So Commissioner, alternate Commissioner Gutierrez.
I think I'll abstain since I didn't.
That's right.
Was in a meeting and haven't had a chance to look at the minutes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Navarrete.
I'll abstain as well, I was in present.
And Chair Vitan.
I.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to written communications, do we have anything?
There are no communications from staff.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to our public comments, non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda. But is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof, please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
I don't see any comments unless Rossa, do you see any comments from the public?
No comments, Gabe.
Okay, there are none.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to reports and requests. Do we have anything from staff or any requests from fellow commissioners?
Chair Vitan, just a quick announcement is that you have alternate Commissioner Gutierrez that's participating, so he was last selected. By the, or appointed by the city council at their last meeting. To fill the void of Miguel Lial, who is now kind of your full commissioner. He was the alternate before. So he'll be joining us for our future meetings, and so it's good to have him on board. And we're trying to onboard him back on, actually didn't know you, the plant commissioners had iPads, so we're working on getting him one issue to him.
Okay, perfect, well, welcome Commissioner, it's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to our non-hearing items. Item number two, adopt resolution number PC 2022-04. An interpretation of the Coachella municipal code section, it's a long section. But it's architectural review and its approval authority for the architectural review of single-family residences. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Show my screen real quick. Did it work? Okay, thank you Chair, members of the plant commission. You might recall at the last plant commission meeting, presented on interpretation of the code section regarding architectural review. And so we talked about in 2016 that there were some streamlined code amendments related to. What would be considered architectural review that should be reviewed by the plant commission at a public hearing versus an administrative review. And at that time, it was mentioned that smaller residential projects that didn't exceed. Three homes could be considered at an administrative level. But over time since 2016, that's been applied to larger developments that contain up to like more than 20 homes. And so in reading the staff report in 2016. It looked like the way it was being applied didn't meet the intent in the staff report, which was supposed to be for smaller projects. So these bigger projects like Sevilla, Valencia. Escanilla Point, these projects were being reviewed at administrative level as long as they weren't proposing more than three floor plans. And so what's been the outcome of that is. Projects that normally would have four or five different floor plans in the past. Now are only proposing three floor plans because of how that section has been applied. And. So you might recall these projects from the past, these are projects more than 10 years ago. I mean, they proposed more than four different residential models, now we're only seeing three. Because how we've applied the architectural review section of the code. So staff prepared an interpretation for consideration last time, so the plant commission. Did request that staff prepare a resolution to adopt interpretation that the code section for architectural review. That would apply to. Three single-family residences would only be if someone proposed to actually build three single-family individual residences. It wouldn't apply to three floor plans that would apply to a project of 100 homes or so. So that resolution was prepared and is in an attachment to your staff report. Staff still recommends that the plant commission adopt that resolution. I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Gabe. Do any, do commissioners have any questions or comments on this item? No, okay, are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
There, let's, chair even not to not hearing item, let's see if there's anybody from the public that would like to discuss.
Okay, Gabe, you stop sharing your screen so I can see.
Oh, still there.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, I just, okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand, do we have? I don't know if there's another way that they can provide public comment, but do we have anyone else or anyone trying to provide public comment?
I don't see.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution based on the draft by staff.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion? Okay, I'll go ahead and second that motion to adopt resolution that was presented by staff. Can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
I believe Commissioner Lial is still absent, so alternate Commissioner Gutierrez.
I'll pass, I'd like to be last.
You said you'd like to vote last?
Yes.
Can we?
Because if my vote is needed to pass it up, probably vote yes, but. Since I haven't seen the resolution, that I'd like to wait till, till less.
Henry, do you wanna kinda weigh in if that's, that's.
So, so let's just, let's just go in your usual order, Gabriel, and if he doesn't want to vote for it, then he can abstain from it.
Okay. All right, then. Commissioner Gutierrez, this would be the order since you're substituting for Commissioner Lial. So would you rather, I guess you have the option to vote yes or no?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Chair Vitan.
I.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our public hearing calendar, and this is, we're gonna hear item number three, which is Vinoyce. Alcohol sales, and this is for CUP. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready to share my screen. All right, Chair, members of the plant commission, Gabriel, that is your development services director, this item. Vinoyce says is a proposed wine bar eating establishment, and this would be under conditional use permit 352. The reason why the applicant needs the conditional use permit relates to alcohol sales, so any alcohol sales in the city. Requires approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant Nicholas Mesa and Letizia Mesa Ayon. Proposed a restaurant and wine bar facility at the old firehouse, and this is located. On the property with the old city hall where the council meetings still occur. And the old firehouse, the address is 1517 Sixth Street, it's in the commercial zone. Here's a map of the location of where it's located, so it's on the south. Eastern corner of the property, and so the park site, the old city hall, the firehouse is all on one parcel. And it's bounded by Vine Street Orchard, Sixth Street, and Fourth Street. It's in the commercial zone. So the fire station. You know, our records show that it was, began construction in 1928. There was actually a historic resources inventory that was done at the city. More than 10 years ago, and estimated the construction in that inventory of 1932, so there's two different dates that, that we've seen for the building. The building used to serve as the Coachella Boxing Club at one point, also the Alter Credit Union. And the City of Coachella Utility Service Building, and currently it's vacant. Here's a few pictures of the history of the building, so this is looking south. So if you recognize that Sixth Street on the other side of the people. And so this is kind of the groundbreaking for the old firehouse. And so the understanding from the record is that this was a kind of a community effort to build. The old firehouse at that location, so you could see the Lopez Hardware. And the Panaria across the street, or the old building, which was a different use at that time. Here's another picture looking in the other direction of the, of the groundbreaking for the building. An old picture of the firehouse after it was constructed, and the fire engine. Another photo that the, the building still has the same look. Can see two palm trees that aren't there today. And here's a more recent picture, I'm not sure exactly when this photo was taken. So the applicant does propose to adaptively reuse the building. It was released as part of a 2020 request for proposals by the city for long-term lease to. Use this as an economic development opportunity. And so the applicant was selected. To repurpose the building and open a restaurant at that location. In the RFP, it talks about providing a unique destination restaurant and or. Related retail operation with distinctive venue experience that would cater to visitors of the downtown. The applicant proposes the wine bar eating establishment, so they would be doing the tenant improvements in the facility. The applicant describes the cuisine would be sushi and an American-style kitchen cuisine. And that would be served along with beer and wine at the facility. Here are some photos of the building as it looks today, so there's still a sign out there that says it's for utility caching in the finance department. But that's no longer occurring at the building today. The old photo showed a drive driveway going into the, the doors of the, the building where the. Older, the, the fire engine used to be located, but there is no fire engine in there anymore, and the driveway. Was removed, and it's more of a pedestrian area today. Here's a more revised version of the floor plan, a little bit different than what was provided as an attachment in your staff report, so this is a little bit more. Updated, and so you can see in the floor plan it has the seating area as shown here. So you propose indoor seating, a restroom, a bar, sushi area, and a kitchen. As far as the conditional use permit, any kind of conditional use permit for alcohol uses is required to be. Well, usually a CUP would require 700-foot distance from playgrounds, residential property. But that, that does not apply in the Pueblo Viejo Zone, and so in the Pueblo Viejo Zone, that was done. To encourage these uses, realizing that there are kind of nearby parks, playgrounds, and residential properties, so. It would actually need to be within that 700 feet in order to attract those businesses. The applicant proposes a type 41 license, so they do need to get a license from the state alcohol beverage control. As far as parking, there is no parking on site, the firehouse wasn't developed with parking. Actually, a lot of the city hall parking in the back is, is really gated off parking, used for. Some of the nonprofits that are leasing some of the facilities. As well as the utilities branch for the city, so people do pay their bills, but not in the firehouse, but in the. Old building, old city hall. And so a lot of the public parking was moved to diagonal parking that completely surrounds the park site. And so future patrons would utilize the parking on Sixth Street, you can see during the day, there's a lot of available parking along the street. There are no hours of operation that have been expressed by the applicant, but there is a condition of approval. That would require closure at 10 AM and then last call up on 30 AM. Which is customary for those types of uses in, in the city and other cities. As far as the environment review, staff determined that this project was being exempt according to CEQA because it's an existing facility. And it's not expanding the existing facility. So staff does recommend that the plant commission approve conditional use permit number 352. With the findings and conditions listed in the resolution 2022-03. But I do also wanna bring one other thing that's come up. So the old firehouse, this is actually the old. Firehouse doors which are located in the existing firehouse on Sixth Street. So these are, so the ones that are out there are actually replicas of what used to be out there previously. And so the applicant does propose to make some changes to the replica doors. I can't show you what it looks, you know, this didn't come out right on my figure, so this is the replica door, right? What I did is a modification based on what the applicant would like to do. And, you know, I don't think staff has. A preference either way, I think if it was the original door, we would have some concerns that we'd be modifying. A historic door, but, but we just wanted to bring that to the plant commission's attention, just in case there were any concerns about changing. Those doors and adding these windows to the bottom. That's the end of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. And I'm not sure if the, I didn't know if I saw the applicant in the audience, but if they are in the audience. They have any questions, if you have any questions, they might be able to answer them for you.
Thank you, Gabe. Um. Okay, before we open up the public hearing, do any planning commissioners have any comments or questions?
I do, the alternate commissioner Gutierrez. Yeah. Is there an existing. Policy regarding historical sites?
Yeah, we do have a section of the code regarding historic sites. And it's regarding establishing historic districts and historic buildings. But we don't actually have any buildings designated as historic buildings. So the plant commission does have the ability to recommend buildings be considered as historic buildings, but none have been designated so far.
Okay, then this proposal in no way affects the. Historical site.
No.
If a policy exists.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If, if, if there's a policy regarding historical sites, this project in no way affects. The policy.
This, this doesn't affect the policy, yeah. So, yeah, so we would have to designate the building and then establish parameters and of how the building could be affected in the future.
But it does qualify as a historical building, built in 1920, 1928, doesn't it? I mean, one of the few, it slept in Coachella, so I think that's the.
Yeah, there's, there's almost like three categories for historic buildings, so it could be of local significance that the city identifies, and we wanna identify it as such. But the other that has state significance. And in the historic inventory that we did, it wasn't eligible to be a, a historic building of state significance or national, like on the national register. But we could designate it as a locally significant building.
Okay, and I have a comment. And. Back in the 60s and 70s, there was a movement statewide nationally. Against such establishments and communities of color. Because disproportionately here in the valley, in the state and in the country. Establishments that were licensed to, to sell as the liquor. Were disappointingly established in communities of color. And. We, as members of the city's planning commission, I was a chair at the time, back in the late 70s. We would not allow such a facility to be established in Coachella. If there wasn't a study. Relative to the number of such establishments relative to the, the population per capita. Okay, because it's the, the other communities in the valley would not authorize such establishments. It's the, with the license for selling alcoholic beverages. It's the, they were all concentrated in, in this, in Coachella. And in neighborhoods in India where the majority were people of color. Did you guys do such a study to determine the number of such establishments in Coachella vis a vis the population?
No, but I mean, ABC does look at concentration of businesses in the city, so the city has. A policy for Pueblo Viejo, like in the district, that would include Sixth Street, that businesses that are on the streets. Would not need to have any specific distance requirements from other alcohol establishments in the city. As well as other sensitive uses like residences, playgrounds, parks, youth centers. as well as other sensitive uses like residences, playgrounds, parks, youth centers. But outside the Pueblo Viejo district, there there are it is required to to make findings that you are seven hundred feet away from all those sensitive uses unless you made some findings for exemptions. With this, you don't need to make those findings for exemption because there is that blanket exception for the downtown.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that because we're talking about the Pueblo Viejo, I mean, the way it was designed is to bring in economic development to make sure that we're able to make best use of the facilities that we already have. And I completely understand Commissioner Gutierrez's point. But I think that because this specific building wasn't already designated as that or looked into to designate us, you know, making it historic and that. I'm not sure it'd be. I I'm not sure it would be appropriate to try to do that now. I think downtown is growing a lot, there's a lot of growth happening in the city, especially there. And I think that's what we're trying to do, right, is to ensure that we're promoting that, that we're telling businesses that, you know, come on, apply and help our our district grow. So I'm in full support of this specific item. I don't know if commissioners have any other questions or comments, anything they'd like to point out.
I just have a question on, I saw in the report, the the menu isn't set up yet, but I did see, I just wanted to note that the food was going to be sushi and some type of bar food. I don't know the applicants here, but I just want to make sure kind of.
I think from, I think from what I saw was that it was sushi for, I know for sure it's sushi because it was mentioned in the staff report. And then it said American style, so I'm assuming that's where like wine and all of that is going to come into play, but I don't know, Gabe, do you have any additional information?
But like, yeah, I think like American style, I think they meant like like pizza, food like that, that. But I don't want to speak to the applicant, there might be a wider scope to menu than that, right? But something that you might typically find.
And it'd be like, what different, like, so that there's variety, right? Because if you're trying to bring people into that, the downtown area, like so it's a variety of foods, so you have that option when you come there, you know, you can go in a different area, because I do see a lot of people that come get lunch or stuff, so it creates more of a.
Correct.
Options, I think, yeah, I think it's, oh, it brings in more options. I know, and this is speaking from like the county side, are the DPS's building that we have in downtown close by. I know that we have a lot of social workers that are there and who are always, you know, just saying like, oh, we wish there were more food options in the area close by where we can go and grab a salad or go and grab, you know, something different. And then also people that walk around too. I know a lot of us are always like in that downtown area looking to see, you know, what's what's new, what's out there. So I think it's a really great project. Anyone else have any other questions, comments? Before we open up the public hearing, because we still haven't done that. Okay, so at this time at six thirty, six thirty-four P M., I'd like to open up the public hearing. And I do see that there's one hand up, there's. Okay, there's two hands up now, and I think the applicant Nick Mesa is the one who had his hand up first. Are we able to unmute him?
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, hey, guys, I apologize, I was having a little a little troubles logging on and for whatever reason, it was, I wasn't able to, but I just jumped on now, just wanted to see, you know, if there was any questions that I could answer or any concerns regarding the the project.
Yeah, there was, so there was a question regarding the menu from Commissioner Figueroa.
Chair, can we, can we have the public comment? The public comment finished first, and then we can bring up, bring back the applicant and ask him some questions.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Gonzalez, can you, I think you can unmute yourself.
I'll have it. It's right. There you go.
I'm sorry, okay, I was given the opportunity to get unmuted. I I I do have a public comment. I I I think the city petitioned the whole community, right, to to petition an idea used for this building that was going to be empty. And being a property owner in that area, I I think that there's a power in numbers, right? So understanding that Mr. Mesa, you know, worked to put this together and understanding that he's making a a real investment in creating a possibility. I would, I just want to, I want to say for the record that I support this wholeheartedly. I think this is going to help everything that we want to do in the downtown area and ultimately it's going to create a community that doesn't shut down when the sun goes down. Because right now, if you go to Coachella, for the most part, there's nothing going on after hours, right? And and I think that type of economy is something that we need to take advantage of. I think it's going to be with the growing downtown area, with with all the living spaces that are being realized. People are going to be looking for services and I think to have a little sushi sushi restaurant that has and also offers maybe a pizza, you know, after hours, when there normally is nothing downtown. I think it's going to be really good for the tax base. And the idea of saying that this is a historical building, we can find historical value in in everything that we have in Coachella, because we've been around for a long time. But I think this is the biggest and best use for that building. And and I would hope that the planning commission wholeheartedly support this and more importantly, that we support it after he opens to make sure that he's successful.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other public comments? I think I saw someone else had their hand up, but I don't know if they put it down by mistake or they don't have a comment now. Okay, so if we don't have any additional public comments, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty eight P M. Do commissioners have any additional questions? Or comments?
Yeah, I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but just to go back on what the restaurant will be serving. Can we touch base on that?
Um, yeah, and I think, so Henry, would we be able to still hear from the applicant?
Yes, as long as you close the public, public comment already, you guys can go ahead and ask him a question.
Okay, Mr. Mesa, are you able to answer the question regarding the menu?
Hmm, hi, guys, this is Nick. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, as far as the menu goes, we're looking to bring something totally different. Sushi is our is number one on our list right now. We got a, we got, we built out a full, full kitchen. So we're going to bring other items other than sushi. But sushi being our number one, just because, you know, we 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 want to bring something that's different downtown. We want to be able to you know, bring 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 in just something different so that people could come and enjoy it. But we will have a a bigger menu. We're, we have a few items that we're thinking about, but we're not one hundred percent sure on. What we're going to do is maybe host a night or two of of tasting and kind of kind of play with the menu and choose the best ones that we think would fit the community the best.
Thank you. Do we have? Excuse me, do we have any other questions or comments?
I have just one last comment in regards to the restaurant, I think it's a great idea. Instead of having to travel either westbound, this gives an opportunity for our community to come downtown, you know, from from a wide range of ages, we could all, I think everybody loves sushi, right? Something that is very, very uncommon and you need to drive to the west to get it. And I applaud Mr. Mesa because he's seen that this, there's a hole in the market here in Coachella and he's trying to, trying to fill it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or would someone like to make a motion?
We'll move them in a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Can you get a second?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Gonzalez's motion.
Perfect, and can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa?
I.
Alternative Commissioner Gutierrez?
abstain.
Vice Chair Navarrete?
I.
And Chair Vizan?
I.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and congrats, Mr. Mesa.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next item, which is item number four. Architectural review number twenty-one dash twelve amendment, and this is a modification to conditions of approval. And I think we heard this item last time, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Chair Vizan, I'm going to share my screen, give me a second. Okay. All right, Chair and members of the plant commission, this item, architectural review number twenty-one dash twelve was reviewed by the plant commission before. This included the Panda Express and the Aldi. What's before you today is an amendment to that architectural review. It relates to a request to amend conditions of approval for the Aldi specifically as it relates to the rooftop mounted equipment screening. And so this is for the that commercial project at the corner of Caesar Chavez Street and First Street. Here's a city map that shows that project site, the size of zone commercial and their general plan is downtown center. The overall commercial project Fountainhead Plaza is eight point two five acres. And here's a closer look in the aerial. And so what was presented to you before was a development proposal that included the Aldi, Starbucks, Panda Express. Kind of a related project was also a seven eleven gas station and convenience store. Of existing conditions, here's a Walgreens that exists on the site, the McDonald's and the Taco Bell. So as far as the project that hasn't been constructed yet, the the plant commission did review a tenant parcel map, so that would subdivide the property into commercial pads and that would allow for the Panda Express and Aldi to have their own commercial parcels. The architectural review twenty-one dash twelve was for the Aldi and the Panda. The other architecture review was specifically for the Starbucks, so that's separate, you're not reviewing that today. And that was a conditional use permit, a modification for that drive through as well at the time. The other CUP was for type twenty, a license for Aldi to sell beer and wine. Those other buildings that were approved by the plant commission include the Starbucks. And this is what you approved last time as well as the Panda Express. As part of the approved conditions of approval from the resolution related to the Aldi condition seventy-two and seventy-three related to rooftop mounted equipment, mechanical equipment. And so we have a typical standard condition related to commercial projects that the mechanical equipment be screened so that a parapet wall would be greater in height than the equipment. And so, so we mentioned that rooftop units, which are kind of like these screens that are not the parapet wall, would not be used to satisfy that requirement. There was another condition that says that the Aldi supermarket elevation plans should be revised, demonstrating that the rooftop equipment is not visible above exterior wall parapets. And so the applicant is requesting revision to those conditions as included in your staff report. So this is the request of the applicant that those two conditions be revised to read to include the following language, so seventy-two would be revised to read largely the same, but that the, so it would read as follows. All roof mounted mechanical equipment shall be view obscured by a parapet wall greater in height than the equipment installed, with the exception of the Aldi building, where rooftop unit shall not be visible from adjacent roadways per the line of sight exhibit. So that's site, a line of sight exhibit was included as an attachment to your staff report, and we'll go into that a little bit. And so what the applicant contends is that they're achieving the spirit of that condition that the public will not be able to read, to see the equipment from distances around the Aldi building. So we'll show you an example of what that looks like. The other condition revision is removing language as follows. So the Aldi supermarket elevation shall be revised, demonstrating crossing out the rooftop equipment is not visible above exterior wall parapets. But that rooftop unit shall not be visible from the adjacent roadways per the line of sightings of it. Also adding this language at the end of the last sentence, all elevations of the Aldi supermarket shall include exterior wall parapets that view obscure roof mounted equipment from the adjacent roadway per line of sightings of it. So what would that do in terms of the project? So this is what the plant commission reviewed and considered the first time around, right? So the first time around, when the project was submitted, you could see the rooftop equipment, all this changed with the project. Actually, what the applicant did, they brought up the walls so that most of this would be screened. They actually moved this rooftop mounted equipment to the floor. And so it was revised so that the wall came up. But this dotted line would show the rooftop equipment that you you would, that barely extends above the carpet wall from this elevation, which is the elevation that faces Caesar Chavez Street. And then this elevation is the elevation which faces First Street, so you would it's slightly above that parapet wall. But with the sightline of sightline study that the applicant provided, they're indicating from from the level of the person at the street level, you would not be able to see the rooftop limit. These are the other elevations, so this would be the back of the Aldi supermarket, so maybe an elevation you would see from Grapefruit Boulevard and then this, I'm sorry, this would be the elevation from Grapefruit Boulevard. The one at the top would be the elevation if you were at the future Panda Express. And then this would be the revised, so with the revised elevation to bring up the wall so that the equipment would be a little bit less than a foot above the parapet wall, but according to the the line of sight study that you would not be able to see it from the ground level. And so here's a little measurement I took from one of our tools, so it shows that maybe it's about eight and three quarters inches according to the scale that was provided to us. So here's the line of sight study that was provided, so they took four different points around the proposed Aldi building, and so this shows the equipment that would that is, that would be screened by the parapet wall from these points, right? So just recall, they they moved the other equipment to the ground and then they would still have this HVAC unit at the top that. that is above the parapet walls. But according to the line of sight study, would not be visible at these distances. And so one distance is from Grapefruit Boulevard, I'm sorry, not Grapefruit Boulevard, Sesar Chavez Street. The other in the, in the rear from First Street. This other point B from another point on First Street. And then further north, which kind of would be the location of the future Panda Express or maybe a little bit north of there. So the point A, this would be the point from Sesar Chavez Street. So you could see this image up here shows a cross-section of the building, the Aldi building. And this would be a distance of three hundred twenty-seven feet. So if you had a person that was walking along, I assume this would be at Sesar Chavez Street. So at a, at a, at a five feet above ground level, you would not be able to see the, the unit because the parapet wall screened that, that distance. And so this would be the view of the building from that location. From point B, this would be at the side elevation or at the other side of First Street. So at that location, according to the study, you would not be able to see the rooftop equipment. And so the person here would see the, the top of the, the parapet wall instead of the equipment. At point C, this would be kind of to the rear of the building at five feet, distance of a two hundred fifteen feet away. You would not be able to see the HVAC unit according to the study. And then the last point would be at a distance, probably just a little bit north of the Panda Express, so two hundred twenty-one feet away to the north. This person standing here would not be able to see the HVAC unit. So they'd be across the front, the parapet wall, but, but nothing above that. So the, the line of sight study was provided for, for your review. We did provide some comparisons of other Aldi locations throughout Southern California. Just to kind of see what, what we observed there. And so there's different things that are going on where some sites you do see the equipment, other sites are, they're kind of fully screened. But in our recommendation, we, there's, there's a few different alternatives that were presented. We actually prepared two different resolutions. One resolution would be if you were to support staff's recommendation, it would deny the request to modify those two conditions that the applicant is requesting. But if you were to support the applicant's request to modify those two conditions, we also prepared a resolution that supports that request. So staff still has the same recommendation that we originally made. That's just because we did make that original recommendation before. But it is up for Plan Commission's consideration. I'm available to answer any questions if the Plan Commission has any. The applicant is also available if you have questions of them.
Thanks, Gabe. Okay, so before we open up the public hearing, do Commissioners have any questions, comments, or concerns on this item?
No, I was just confused at the last part. Gabe kind of lost me on. So what's the difference between both options or both modifications?
Oh, yeah. So there's, there's basically like two choices in front of you. So one is, is if you kept the original conditions, then, then it would require the applicant to extend the height of their parapet wall to completely screen it. And, but what the, the applicant is obviously saying is that, you know, they think that condition really restricts them in terms of what they're, what they can do for their building. And so they would rather the Plan Commission modify those two conditions so that they could keep the HVAC unit. And they believe that you can't see it at any point around those points that I mentioned. So the, the resolution that we're recommending approval of is that you stay with the, the same condition of approval before, for approval. But if you were to agree with the applicant's request, which is to modify the conditions, there is a resolution that's been approved to approve of the applicant's changes to the conditions.
I have a couple of questions, Gabe. And, and apologies if I'm supposed to know, but is there a reason why? You know, I guess we would prefer that HVAC unit not to be, not to be there. And I don't remember, quite honestly, from our previous meeting of where it was recommended for that to be placed.
I think originally those units were all on top. And our request has they taken it back to the drawing board and actually re moved all the, it was only one that he had to keep on the roof. So they, I think they've already moved most of the, the AC units to the back of the building, which is, you know, I think that's, that's great effort. So there's one that's still there.
Right. And is there, right. And is there a reason why, you know,
It's just designed.
prefer not to have that there?
Is it, is there a reason why, who prefers not to have it there?
Why we say, is there a reason why the commission or why planning staff would say for none of those units to be there on top? On the roof.
It's just, it's aesthetics, basically, you know, the, the unit isn't sticking up over the, the parapet wall. That's, that's really what it is.
Yeah, it's, it's really aesthetics. So you know, that condition is usually applied to commercial projects to avoid seeing all that on top of the roof, right? So the applicant feels that they're in the spirit of that condition that no one would be able to see it unless you were at a higher elevation than people usually would be at the street level.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, I wanted to understand that part because I, I'm not very familiar with those units. I don't know if for some specific reason, they have to be on the rooftop or not. So I just wanted to get that clear.
And just one clarification. So there, there isn't a code requirement about the rooftop screening, right? So it's a standard condition that we usually add. So this doesn't require variance. So it's really a decision of the Plan Commission to amend the conditions. So there's no special exceptions you need to grant to do this.
Okay, thanks, Gabe. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission before we open up the public hearing? Okay, so at this time at six fifty-eight PM, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. And let me check. And it seems we have one hand up for public comment. Sean? You can go ahead and unmute yourself. Or?
We just unmuted him, so he should be able to speak.
Good evening Commissioners, hopefully you can hear me. This is Sean Ansel with RDC. We're the architect working with Aldi on this project. Just wanted to highlight a couple of the changes that we made. And I think Gabriel did a great job explaining kind of where we started and where we are today. So appreciate that, that follow-up presentation showing our original submittals that showed the parapets were actually much lower as well as the units that were previously placed on the roof. So just to quickly highlight what we did, we did raise the entire building by two feet all the way around. So our, our parapets originally were at eighteen foot eight. We have increased those to twenty foot eight. In addition to that, we created an enclosure on the ground level. And I think most of the higher equipment that you're seeing in the initial submittal package, those units are refrigeration units. They're about seven foot tall. And we would typically screen those with individual roof screens. So in an effort to meet the requirements of planning and in conjunction with our discussions with Gabriel, we decided to enclose those on the ground level rather than have them up on the roof. So I think that was a big win for the project. You know, it's a little more expensive to place those further away. We have additional pump, pumps and piping. However, we do feel that this is a better solution in terms of screening the units. In addition to the line of sight studies. So just one thing I wanted to point out on those line of sight studies. You know, we do have this one single HVAC unit. Unfortunately, it can't be moved significantly from where it is currently. And we have adjusted that location to bring it a little lower. So it, right now, it's only seven inches higher than the parapet. Which isn't very much. We've also placed that significantly further away from the front wall. So from Caesar Chavez, it's ninety-two feet back from our front wall. And from First Street, it's seventy-two feet back from, which would be the south wall. And I think that also provides some additional line of sight screenings. So if you look at some of the studies we've done, you know, as you get further away from the building, the, your line of sight actually takes that natural angle a little higher. So I just want to reiterate that that unit will not be visible. It's really unnecessary to raise the building any further than we already have. And there won't be a need to add any individual screens around that unit. So again, we're very confident in our line of sight studies. We actually built a 3D model of this building that we use for our construction documents. And we're just looking for the commission to allow us to to demonstrate that this unit will not be visible rather than to raise the parapets any further. So if you have any other questions, I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? I saw there was another hand raised, but I don't see it anymore. Okay, so I don't see any other hands raised. So we're gonna go ahead.
Chairman Vitan, can you hear me? I have my hand up.
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, it wasn't up anymore, but I did see it before when Sean was speaking.
Yeah, Chairman Vitan, I think Sean did a great job of describing what the ask is, right? I think when these, when these types of conditions were, were originally petitioned back thirty years ago, the intent was to avoid looking at all the ugly equipment on top of the roof, right? And in this particular case, the applicant has removed all the rooftop equipment with the exception of this one unit that we simply mechanically cannot move. It happens to be about seven inches over the parapet wall. But as the, as the cross-section or the study shows, even from five hundred feet away, you can't, you can't see the equipment. I think Gabe did a great job of describing, staff did a great job of describing the condition. I just, I just want the commission not to be confused that, that we're, what we're asking is not being supported by staff. Staff is basically trying to keep us to the original condition. And for those seven inches is basically asking us to redesign the building, which would be very costly and would create serious delays in the project. So what we're asking for is that in the spirit of what the condition is really trying to achieve, that the commission be sensitive to the fact that we're from five hundred feet away, you're not going to be able to see any equipment on the roof. The, as you know, that is a beautiful building. I think the applicant is ready to move and pull, pull permits as soon as possible. Especially if, if the project is supported tonight by, by, by basically not supporting staff's recommendation by asking, by allowing us or, or you accepting the fact that no equipment is going to be visible from the street. And we're asking for you to create this new opportunity or basically allow us to build this building as being proposed. Again, it's seven inches. The, the equipment is way in the center of the building and even five hundred feet away, you're not going to be able to see any equipment on the roof. And I think, I think for that reason, we're asking for your support. We're asking that you be sensitive to the fact of what it would cost to redesign the building. I think for no apparent reason. So I just wanted to ask the commission to support the project, allow it to continue to go and, and hopefully break ground as soon as possible and, and do something on that bare ground that's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have any other public comments? I still see Sean, your, your hand is still up and then Mr. Gonzalez, your hand is still up, just making sure.
I lowered my hand. I don't know why it's still up.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay. We are going to go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh six PM. And do Commissioners have any additional comments or questions regarding this item? No? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go against staff recommendation and go ahead and approve. How would I word it, council?
I think the there's alternatives.
You would be supporting alternative one?
So I would go ahead and I'd like to motion to support alternative, alternative modification number one.
That would be adopting resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero five.
That would be adopting the resolution, resolution two thousand twenty-five.
Sorry, and Vice Chair Navarrete, did you say you were going with staff's recommendation or you were going with the second option?
The second option.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, that would, so that would be, so that would be alternative one. So adopt what Vice Chair Navarrete mentioned is would approve the amendments to the two conditions as the applicant requested. And I think that's what Vice Chair Navarrete has requested.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second Vice Chairman of it is motion.
Okay, thank you. And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Aye.
I think Commissioner Lial is still absent. So Commissioner Gutierrez?
I think I'm gonna be in favor of this proposal, this motion. Because after forty years, it finally puts a notice, other operations on that commercial property that their true location should be in the industrial park.
Aye.
Vice Chair Navarrete?
Aye.
And Chair Vitan?
Aye, thank you.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to informational. Do we have anything from staff?
No, I know, I think the commis, Chair Vitan, you, you, you mentioned maybe other Plan Commission intentions that, you know, there have been some concerns expressed about what's gonna happen with the, what was known as a Glenroy Hotel. So there's gonna be a special presentation to the City Council this Wednesday of about a potential proposal for the site. And so I just recommend if you are interested in, in learning about one possibility for that location to tune into the City Council meeting this Wednesday. Usually those presentations are at the beginning of the meetings. So the council meetings this Wednesday at six o'clock.
And Gabe, what would it be in the programations and presentation section that we said?
It would be, yeah, it should be there already. Let's see it. I'll pull it up real quick.
Well, it's not on that section of the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify. It may have been.
Yeah, it's on there. So it's number six. It's called Behavioral Health Campus Glenroy Hotel.
Couldn't see.
Okay, any other informational items, Gabe?
No informational items. I just know that the next Plan Commission meeting is on the 16th. So we do plan on having that. And I think there's a couple of you Plan Commissioners that will be attending the Plan Commissioners Academy. So I'm sure we all look forward to that and you sharing the information when we come back.
Definitely. Gabe, I just have, and I think I've asked you, but I don't recall, I'm now with some changes. Do we know when we would be able to have in-person meetings again? And is the City Council having in-person meetings?
The City Council is having in-person meetings or it's a hybrid, right? So you have some City Council members that are participating on Zoom. So, so we probably could go back to in-person meetings now since some of those restrictions were lifted before. So last time I talked to the city manager, he actually mentioned that it's really at the Plan Commissioners want, want to go back to in-person meetings. But you know, I think it's worthwhile to get the feedback from, from the whole commission.
Would we put that on the agenda to vote on it?
Do you think we need to have a vote on that in order to go back to regular in-person meetings?
No, no, you, you can, you can communicate with each commissioner individually.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me, I'll, I'll follow up with all the commissioners and then see what the preference is. And then if it looks like everyone wants to go back to, to regular meetings, then maybe that's what we do.
Okay, thanks, Gabe. Okay, we are at the end of our agenda. And I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:12 PM. It was great seeing everyone. Have a good evening and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, good night.